Good evening, everyone. I'd like to go ahead and call the meeting in order this time, please. Turn all cell phones, electric devices off or vibrate at this time. Mr. Flentis, would you please lead us in our prayer and pledge as he can serve?
Well, thank you for another day. We appreciate all that you do for each of us here today. We ask to heal all the sick, we ask to heal all people dealing with some kind of sickness. We ask to bring the peace to the world we live in. And we ask to bless us as a council to make the best choices we can to the city of Alexandria. Amen. Amen.
(Inaudible) of the United States of America. And to the Republic of which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, consider approval of the amendments to the June 5th, 2017 meeting.
I have a couple corrections.
Okay.
The Lord was excellent, and so was our city attorney.
Gotcha.
Other than that, I'm making motion we approve them accordingly.
All right, second. All papers say aye.
Aye.
Right, visitors who are not on the regular agenda, would be given the opportunity to address the council on any subject at this time. Is anyone here this evening not on the agenda that would like to speak? All right, moving along. Discuss and take action on a presentation from Shelby Flores and Richard Parra on their proposed TMCU leadership program project.
I'm on my own stage. Richard had a family, Richard Sealer last night. Okay, so for our TMCN project, we're really wanting to do something that'd be good for our community as a whole, and for anybody of all ages. And so we were really wanting to do something that involved exercise, because I just think that's something, we both think that's something really extremely important. And so we thought about doing something at the park. As soon as you go down the park hill, and you look to your left, there's an open lot of like nothing, like there's nothing there anymore. And we wanted to do some workout equipment.
You're talking about open button, button area?
Yeah.
Across from swimming pool, right?
Yes. Okay, and we're wanting to do workout equipment, not like high-tech workout equipment that's super expensive, but like just like the bar or workout equipment that you can do like pull-ups on, and like something that you can do like push-ups, something that would be for abs, arms, and legs. And we think this will be very helpful, because there's a basketball court, and there's a swimming pool, and that's all there really is for like, you know, teenagers and stuff. And they just put in a new playground for like little kids and everything. And so we just thought having this workout equipment would be good for adults too, and for teenagers who just want to work out. Another idea that we had is having mile markers around the park, because I see people walking and running around that park all the time. And I think it would be nice if you didn't have a phone or any like device to be able to see how much you've ran, to have mile markers and have it around the park to see how much you have done. And that's people, for extreme athletes, to moms who are walking their kids in their trailers, just everyday things. And another idea that we had was having, if you're going down the park hill and it's the left side of the road, having asphalt sidewalk right there. Because my partner, Richard Parra, he's in cross-country for our cross-country team here in Baltimore, and they have morning workouts, and they go run down the park hill. And he said that every now and then, when they run down the park hill, they have to watch out for the cars, because sometimes those cars go super fast down that hill, and they have to watch out for them. And so he said it'd be super helpful if we had sidewalk right there, people would walk up and down and run up and down that park hill. And so those are just some of our ideas.
Sounds good. So what's the process on the whole project, has it worked? You have to submit it to somebody?
I think we just like started, we actually like, first we had to get it confirmed by y'all, and then we had to get it confirmed by the park board, which we already know by the park board, like we said everything was okay. And so we're working with Tammy...
Burden.
Yeah, Tammy Burden, and then Ms. Harold. And so what we first have to start doing is getting money, because obviously this is going to be expensive. And so we're trying to go the cheap route, instead of getting expensive workout equipment, trying to go the cheap route, instead of getting a concrete, we think the asphalt would be cheaper. And so those are our ideas. We're hoping that we can, we've already, we've raised over a thousand dollars so far, and I'm sure we can get a lot more.
Start saying, "Yeah, but if you run in the car, you don't need..."
It's dangerous. Is there anybody on council who uses that park like eight times a day, and then takes selfies of themselves running through the park?
I think it's great idea, too.
I think it is. So you have a thousand, do you have a projected budget, or do you have an idea of what you're going to do?
I'm not sure if we have an idea right now. We just kind of have a good idea of what we want, but we don't have like price settings and everything yet right now. That's what we have to get together, me, Richard, Angus Harold, we have to kind of get together, Tammy, and figure out all this stuff. But we haven't had the time to, all of us, be able to get together. But we have a very short amount of time to get this done. So we're thinking, if we can't get all three things done, we definitely want to have the workout equipment, for sure.
I think the workout equipment and the mile marker aren't too bad. I think the sidewalk will take city effort, some city input, probably some type of engineering or something.
Well, yeah, going down the hill, we definitely want to get contractors' input on that. I would recommend that we do both, because we have one on the Paddy Five Ash, just adjacent to our property right there. We have a very antiquated rock sidewalk that probably dies about eighty percent of the way, once you kind of bleed into the hill, and then it just proves it's not there. I would suggest that the city partner with them, if that's the project they decided, and just do concrete on both sides of it, so you're going to have one going up, one going down. I do, I totally recognize where y'all are going with that.
Yeah, it is.
It's not even that, it's running down that asphalt. There's no problem with asphalt, because running down that asphalt, if you get going a little bit, and you get some gravel there, because it's been a few times I've almost went down.
Well, then, and you bring them to...
That might be your adverse part.
Where you're putting that sidewalk in, you're going to have to span some sort of distance there, correct there, drainage or something right there?
I think we looked at it, the left side, I think is pretty solid, but the right side is a park where it's just like, you're not going to be able to put a sidewalk there.
You'd be surprised with Scott Lockton, the engineer. Scott Lockton can fix almost anything.
So what do you need from us? Approval for the project?
Yes.
Second?
A second.
All papers say aye.
Aye.
You're very welcome, thank you. All right, discuss and take action on the joint election contract with Rome's County for the November 7th, 2007 general election.
Do you make any suggestions?
What? Did I skip it? I did, I apologize. Just beeped me. I don't know what I did there. Oh, okay, I wrote that down wrong one, my fault. All right, skip that, we're going to go back to safety. Discuss and take action on the request from Seven Street Baptist Church to have a July Fourth parade on Seventh Street between Harris and Hamilton Avenue.
Y'all have any questions? I didn't have a whole bunch in here. Y'all have any questions about what we're trying to do?
Pretty well over there, listen.
Yeah, we do have insurance, office insurance for our stuff, to have the parade stop or something, or if somebody got hurt, we have some way to take care of that problem. Also, the doggies, if people want to have their dogs in there, we're going to require them to be on a leash, and make sure they have tags, so if somebody gets beat, I'm not saying that they will, but if you don't have little kids, you know, up there, start hitting on a dog, and hitting on life, and they'll bite you. We're going to try and make sure that they all have tags. I can't guarantee that every one of them will have it, and we'll catch them off. We're not going to have any kind of big vehicle either. Only thing we want to do is use a fire truck to lead the parade, and the rest of it will be like golf carts, maybe a four-wheeler here and there, nothing bigger than that. And bicycles and wagons, and cats and dogs, and whatever they want, if they want to walk out there. We thought this would be a way to kind of bring some patriotic stuff to the city, and give it something for the families to do, because not everybody wants to go down for a few, all that kind of stuff, so.
You can't have a parade without a fire truck.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. We've got a little one, we don't have to get a real big one, but we at least want something to have in front of it. And our guys, our members will be out there at the intersection as they come, and they'll get out there and go have a best one, and all that kind of stuff. So we've got to be as safe as possible, and then make it as quick as possible. Maybe it'll get big, and you might have to come down Eighth Street, I don't know, we got a number. But that's what we're going to try.
Second?
Second.
All papers say aye.
Aye.
Thank you all, thank you very much.
You're very welcome, thank you. All right, we'll try again. Discuss and take action on the joint election contract with Rome's County for November 7th, 2017 general election. Basically the same order as we're going to...
Yes.
Let them change. Make a motion we approve the interlocal agreement. Have present.
Second?
Second.
All papers say aye.
Aye.
All right. Discuss and take action on the amendments to the animal control contract with the city of Miami. You should have that in your packet.
Just saying that we're going to dock out.
Julie, you want to comment on the changes in the interlocal that we currently have?
Yes.
They're watching, preparing for that. We're keeping the interlocal the same, we're just adding a provision, a ten dollar desert housing fee, right? Yes.
Because right now, as it reads, anything that comes from Miles, we would have to euthanize it, by the way that it's worded, and if they, because it was for by dogs, sick injured. Well, if they want to call us and give us a healthy pet, and say that they want to put it up for adoption, that's not in the contract as it reads now, so we just want to amend it for the changes. And the ten dollars made wording fee, that's to help...
For our dogs.
Yes.
Is that sufficient?
That's what is in the ordinance as it states now, for any like citizen, if your dog gets impounded, the impound fee is ten dollars to make. So that's where that comes in.
That's a lot cheaper than the wording.
Hey, I'm going to be gone if I can.
And what else? Miles, you can use your backyard.
They're going to be big dogs, they're probably not...
So yes, it's sixty-five dollars if we put them down, because that's also in the ordinance for...
That was from the previous agreement we had, right?
Yes. Because I didn't answer your question.
Yeah.
Make a motion we approve the amendment to the animal control contract with the city of Miami.
Second?
Second.
All papers say aye.
Aye.
All right, discuss and take action on the depository contract with Bounder National Bank, you should also have that.
You have an agreement, extension with amendments to it? I got a phone call from Phil Springer on Friday afternoon, and he said our depository contract expires, actually it expired yesterday. And so what I wanted to ask council to do is to extend the current depository contract and make no changes for a period of six months. That would give me time to prepare the RFP for local code chapter 105, and put it out to bid. Essentially, this is, we have to put out to bid where we're going to deposit all our city funds. And while that may sound great, some banks want to participate in that, and some do not. So I like, and it's a five-year agreement, and so we did our, obviously we did this last one, January 9th, 2013, or June 28th, 2012, is when we began and expired, June 18th, 2017. So I'm asking you to extend the current depository agreement with the Bounder National Bank for a period not to the season six months, under current agreement in place, and offer out to city manager to develop an RFP for the depository record.
Good with that?
Second? All papers say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
All right, consider approval of the building permit.
Okay, I'm not going to read two. Act on two of these, and the third one, we need to discuss. First, on being non-dependent, fifteen oh four, I haven't paid a, want to build a, they can twin long mill or carport. And right next, by Old Fitz and my carport, the bill now missing two is carport, twenty to twenty-five foot, the default load, or you can set back, and everything should be fine. This is James. Yeah. And James, you have a four oh three M V. And we're going to run into the same problem that we had up here on Eighth Street, where, yeah. The front tank, and how, all those houses long haven't been there, all of them are in setback. There's not enough space, according to the setback, to allow a carport to that old area, because the houses are built in setback.
We don't necessarily, do we have an issue on the side?
No, no, I measured that he's good on the side. You know, it's a twelve, let's see, that's a quarter to twenty-one, and coming off the right side of the driver area by a car, it's twelve foot over, and so he's still going to be about six foot away from there.
No problem.
Okay, good.
The issue is going to be the length, one boards the street.
Well, coming out the twenty-one feet, how close is he going to be to the street?
He would be about six foot off the street. That house was built in sixty-five, and the garage is not large enough to house my new vehicle that I purchased. So I was trying to get some kind of protection for us there, and the house is what I call a thorough enough progress to be on the left-hand side here from the face of it. There's not enough room between the garage and the property line, and I don't believe there's enough space on the right side. I have a measure of the right-hand side, but right there, where you see those bushes, that's my line, that's my boundary line, yes, sir.
So how far off the street was the one?
Eighty. Well, it was the same way, the front of the house has been, it's been in setback.
Well, how far do we want, trying to go off the street? First question, the carport, is it going to have walls, or is it going to be open?
No, it's just open carport.
It's open, so it's see-through, so it'll block, necessarily block vision in that way.
Yeah, well, he's not on the corner, so, no. But yeah, now, you wouldn't, there wouldn't be anything disruptive, you know.
And there's no sidewalk, Richard?
No. There's a sidewalk in front of the house, it runs nearly into the middle of that ditch there. Is there a sidewalk there? Yes, sir.
The one that comes through the house.
The one on the street?
But not the...
No, I haven't got nothing coming to carport to the house yet. I had planned on doing that. I forgot to redo my driveway, it's all broken up there, cracked up, and I'm going to get that rebuilt, if I had permission to have a carport there. And eventually get a sidewalk from that to my house installed. Which my sidewalk is also busted up, so I plan on replacing that main sidewalk coming out.
You said seven foot off the road, or six foot?
Six, seven, but depending on who you...
Say the road, sir.
From the edge of the road?
Yeah.
I don't have a problem with it. I mean, I don't know what you're doing in your situation like this. If you want to cover your color here in the next one.
And there's not heavy traffic, so...
Has he gone to the...
P and Z.
No, is he?
No.
Does he need to go to P and Z first?
Very mature request, right? Yeah, P and Z would most likely just say it's okay, and then...
Well, they didn't want us to...
Well, yes, I think you're right.
Can we, can we... Could make recommendations, that's a wonderful...
What you can do, what you can do, if you choose to, in the interest of time, is you can make them, obviously I would vote the other two out, if y'all really think we're going to put the other one.
Yeah.
Hardest this one out. If it is the council's desire, you can grant approval pending P and Z's variance request.
Pending P and Z's approval.
Yes. Now, P and Z does not do it, it still gives him the option to come back to council and appeal that application. But he can't pursue the construction.
So P and Z...
So P and Z, P and Z can be in Friday.
Okay.
Or Monday, whenever they...
I make the motion we approve James and Jeanette Hedo's building permit contingent upon the approval of the variance request that P and Z committed. Does that make sense?
Yes, sir.
Because usually, you have to go to P and Z first, and then come here, get your variance request. So, so assuming that the P and Z committee approves the variance request, then you're good to go from there.
Sure, sure. Thank you, sir.
All papers say aye.
Aye, and if they don't approve it, then you come back, talk to us.
Okay. All right, we did it, okay, we want to...
I make the motion we have committed to building permits, yes, because they...
Thank you. Second?
Second.
All papers say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, sir.
I'll watch the box committee, I don't have a problem.
All right, you can see answers by week, the report.
Okay, in your package, you had sales tax report, you know our reimbursement for the period of June 2017, which is a little above what we had at 2016, so we're still doing good, we're still rocking along. I anticipate a million dollars plus in sales tax revenue. We have two more monthlies, and one more quarterly before the fiscal year is out, and so things are only up and up on that front. Street paving, guys have been very, very busy, even though we are somewhat shorthanded, we are still pursuing Eleventh Street. Talked to Scott this morning, he is wanting to try to pave sometime after the Fourth of July, and start on Eleventh Street, as well as Park Road. I anticipate us to start zipping Park Road sometime this week, and tearing that up. One other thing that we're adding is the dump station for RVs. We're going to move it to the other side of the street, and kind of out in a little open area just adjacent to the street, we're going to move it out there, so it's out of the way, and the RV's not literally stuck on the street, on a line, or whatever that. And so we're going to, that's one of the other things we're going to do. Sixth Street's over by IGA, from basically, definitely at the alley where IGA and Apocuo is, back towards Broadway, we're going to do a cold patch overlay. We may do the entire block if we have material, to give you an idea of what that looks like. Tenth Street, next to Miss Candace's house, is that. We considered zipping that intersection up, but with the truck traffic and whatnot, we're going to try this overlay first. It'll solve the problem long-term, we think. We paved it about five years ago, and it just gets beat up, just because of all the weight on that. And so we had some people interested in that. Schedule wise, I'm going to be at the TML legislative update or file roundup on June 30 in Austin. We were scheduled to have our government board funding on extension requests done on the 28th. They have since moved that meeting to July the 6th, and so I'll be going back and looking for that. And we will not have a city council meeting on July 3rd. Unless anybody just has some absolute heartburn, if you want to take care of it. That's all I have. Only any questions, concerns, comments, additions?
Sort of this out there, feel free to chuck something in. What is the possibility that we could put something on the website, where citizens could, if they had an issue, like a pothole that, you know, Ethan Phillips or whatever, that they could list that, submit that to the city, and just have that, have a place to put that, those concerns, you know, whether it's a pothole, whatever it is. I mean, I don't know the possibility of that, but having an outlet for this, as opposed to social media?
Yes.
Just going on, making very broad comments? And send me to make a comment, which then leave me to, what actually, coach the basketball team? But, but, I mean, what?
I, yes.
I mean, just a facility for people to make these comments, and it could be, you know, it could be anything.
It's actually already on there. It may not be, for people not thinking this, but it's on there. We've got stuff for, and I've forwarded to whoever, you know, was in charge of it or whatever.
I just need to know, maybe we need to post that or something? Because I don't know that, if I could be home, that's always going to be my comment from now on, is how do you know here, and put it in there?
Can you make a hot key on the first page, or do I have to go find it?
And so it's just an idea. I mean, so that way, you know, I've always wondered, a lot of people, if you called up the city and made a complaint about a pothole, would you sure as heck go check it out?
Yes, absolutely.
And you just need to know that.
For the couple of thousands of people that are going to be watching this later, we really don't monitor Facebook, and we don't monitor individual Facebook accounts for particular potholes, or things of that nature. Now, if it's a bigger issue, if it's a water leak, or if it's a sewer leak, or something of that nature, we certainly monitor that. But as far as potholes, or street repairs, and things of that nature, your best avenue is to contact City Hall, either through the website, or 365-5511, or I'll give you the cell phone number later.
Well...
And to that end, I would add on to that, I had a discussion, and I'm going to go look at this firsthand, the city of Burley has been using a program called gov.net, I believe that's the name of it. And it's a way for their citizens to engage City Hall, and it's in a manner of, they go to the website, and it's almost like a portal on Mars, and you type in "pothole that Ethan Phillips," and that gets routed to Melissa, who then sends that to Scotty. Scotty goes and fixes the pothole, right? And then it's got a check on it, he's X out, and knows when to require a tablet and all those things, but he isn't. Okay, this pothole's been taken care of, we put this much sanding there, we put this much base in there, we put some of those asphalt in there, and we track our costs on that. So much asphalt at eighty, at eighty dollars a ton, that's only... So much asphalt at eighty foot, at eighty dollars a ton, and so much sand at eight dollars a ton, that kind of sort of thing. And we get a better handle on what it costs to fix a pothole. Somebody calls in a water leak at Thurman McCarver, and, uh, it gets sent to Clyde, who then sends that to Carlos, who then goes out and fixes the water leak. Carlos puts the sanding into a certain level, which is one of the things we're gonna start changing, uh, and then puts cliche in for compaction, says, he sends the, hits the check button, Scott Watkins immediately gets an email saying, this, this water leak has been repaired, now go fix the street.
Yes, I mean, if we had some record, uh, because I'm, I'm convinced that if you contact City Hall, we resolve these issues. And so, but we need to have some, you know, ninety-five percent of requests are handled within this time period, you know, or seventy-five are handled this time period, you know, to have that feedback to the citizens at the back. If, you know, if you don't make general, make the statements, but you make specific requests, those are actually handled, uh, frankly, quickly.
And, and if they're not, we, we have good reason justification, I mean, you know, we, we hear about the streets behind Stripes about once a month, and, and the reason we can't do that is we're trying, we're gonna have to go, just basically put some concrete down because of all the heavy truck traffic coming in and out of there. Um, and so that's, that's a bigger long-term fix than just some Band-Aids that we're gonna throw out there. But if it's a pothole, yeah, I mean, you go out there, we cut it, we fix it, and. Uh, that was one other thing too as well, um, uh, I did get some feedback on the water rates, it's been fairly positive, I don't know if y'all had that as well, but, uh, we, we are getting some positive feedback on the rate thing. Um, also in the mail, have you gone down the rate of them?
No.
Okay. Uh, very quick, you will be getting what's called the Consumer Confidence Report, every water system in the state, if this out there is regulated by T C Q, it tells you where we get our water, how much of, how much source we're using of our water, and what we use to treat the water. And so it's a very, uh, it's about a three-page, uh, report, we got a page and a half of it, spreadsheet, and you need a little chemical chart table thing, you know, the K S equals sodium thing, you're gonna need that to devise this, but we're doing exactly what the state taxes mandates every water system do there. And, uh, I also talked with Linda Hawkins about that, so you should see an article in the paper. Um, and I'd also be remiss if I didn't bring something else up. Kudos to the Bounder Volunteer Fire Department for the hard work yesterday. Um, if you had not heard, there was a fire at the Twelve Mile Bridge, um, and, uh, Brent Allen and Mr. Langston and Mr. Cresta, the one that works, not Clyde. Uh, um, and, and the rest of the volunteer fire department did an excellent job putting that out on Father's Day on Sunday morning, and, uh, kudos to you guys, I'm pretty sure it was cool.
It was nice.
You know, suits.
We had a whole lot.
Is there any details you can share with us?
Other than, other than that the, the bed of the road, it was all timber, it was gone, it's gone from the east side, from the west, you know, west side to the east side. We saved about five yards of that bridge, what, about five yards, five yards of that bridge, but it was gone by the time we got there. Uh, that thing probably was burning way before Clyde even saw that thing. And Clyde, Clyde saw the smoke about eight o'clock, but it looked way off, so it probably had already burned itself down, so it looked thin, and so he thought it was way off, and then, uh, Lane walked or drove out there, because he saw, he had us go out there. By the time I got out there, which was like, it called at nine twenty-seven, and I was out there at nine forty-five, most of the bridge is already gone, across the river almost already, so.
So malicious.
More than likely, I can't say for sure. I, you know, you never know, somebody may have did it on accident, but, uh, I would, I couldn't see anything other than probably, it's, it's suspicious, and I would think that somebody probably just started it. We just don't know if it was intentional or not. You know, kids go out there on time, so, you never know.
Was it previously closed?
It's been closed for whatever, twenty years, however long it's been out there. They've got barriers on there. The only thing you can do is walk across it. You know, most everybody takes pictures and stuff like that now.
Initials.
Initials, I, I had mine on there somewhere, I don't know where, back in the day. If you get home at six o'clock, or, well, it's already six, or five-thirty, whenever Case Han has there, I did an interview with them.
State Farm Marshals will be here tomorrow.
Yeah, they're supposed to be. Whether he finds a, a, a point of origin and whether it was suspicious or not, that's gonna be interesting to see.
Well, if I love big deal with it, with you.
Right, anything else?
Sam, I was thinking, this young lady was giving her presentation, the people, with the exception of these two, are mediocre shape, use this end. I wish their, you know, the bomb, people call my dad, young and his wife, their dogs, use this. I wish, is that trail just lowered, fenced in down there with a creek that used to be there? I wish, I wish this end could be cared for too, and maybe continue on.
Sure, we, we mow that, um, I think there is.
There used to be a trail by the creek, it may be over there that's fenced in.
It may be overgrown, is it?
I think it's overgrown.
Yeah.
It's overgrown, but if, if, you know, they can mow that, you can walk or run inside that fence. There was, there was a, a gateway on both, on both ends.
Right. There are gateways in this company.
A lot of people use they to.
The bombos out of it?
Yeah, to, to walk, a general.
Even if, even if you put a, a walkway, uh, you can block down this, this end, right beside the street, you know, four, four foot, five foot, the walkway from, uh, the gate up here by the road, all the way down to, but, but, you know, you can put a, you can put a, a walkway through there.
Do you ever try to drive your bike down that road about five-thirty, morning when it's dark?
I'm talking about the path from the road.
I know, I know, I'm just saying, if there was a sidewalk, I'd be on it.
You can even tie it into that old, you know, rock bridge there.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. And then, even on going forward with the big hill, if you go on the other side of the street, you know, I'm not sure if that's city or if that's individually owned, but, you know.
You talking about?
Yeah.
Where the hill, where the hill comes down?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's individually owned.
Uh, you know, you can talk to them, folks, and maybe put a walkway through there, you know, keep it off the streets, wait in the street.
Sure, no problem. They five minutes clean out right down there.
Yeah, that's all.
If you're doing the big hill, let's imagine.
Well, the thing about the big hill is, you know, on the peggy side, you know, less a drain. Anytime you put it in there.
Yeah. I like the suggestion, Mr. Stifel.
All right, key requests for future agenda items from city council, anybody have anything else to get on the agenda, please?
Keep in mind, we will not meet until July seventeenth.
Have a good evening, be covered. All right, moving along, Bounder City Council Executive Session is authorized by Texas Department Code, section five by one dot zero seven, consultation, city attorney, updated alternative water project.